It was a decision that... That went against what I... Anyway.
It's loud. Alright, I appreciate everybody coming to spend Valentine's Day with us. It's a big party. I call this meeting of the Magnolia Independent School District order to let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Everyone, please stand while Gary leads us in our invocation.
Alright, when we gather together, we say a prayer before we start. And so if you would, please join us in prayer. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for our time together. We just thank you for all the blessings you give us. We thank you for the great students we have that we could celebrate tonight. We thank you for all the great teachers and their tenacity and just provide them with energy, please. We thank you for all the administrators here, the great job they do. We just love our district and it's all because of you. We give you all the credit, all the glory and the credit for everything here. We thank you for those who protect us, both military and local law enforcement. We thank you for their service and we just thank you for all the ways you bless us. Please guide and direct everything we do tonight. Keep us in your path. And again, we just thank you for all the ways you bless us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
If everybody continued to remain standing at this time, I'd like to have our Students of the Month, Case from Bear Branch Intermediate, Preseda, did I get that right or close? From our Alpha Academy and Ellie from Elsner Elementary. Please come forward to recite the pledges, followed by the Student of Month presentation. Where is... Are we missing one? Yep, alright. Alright, Case, if you would, start us with the American pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Alright. Let's start with Ellie. Ladies first.
Thank you, Mr. Adcox, Dr. Stevens, and the board for this wonderful opportunity. My name is Angela Martinez and I'm one of the Assistant Principals at Ellisore Elementary. I would like to introduce to you Ellie Slider as our Elementary Student of the Month. Ellie has many people here to support her tonight. She has her parents Nathan and Jessica, her brother Levi, her little sister Abby, her grandparents Vernon and Jenny Whitten. She also has many teachers here from Ellisore, including Ms. Riley, Ms. Cheek, and Mr. Howard. Ellie's a fourth grader at Ellisore. She's been at Ellisore since the first grade. She did say that she wished that she was there for kindergarten too, but that it was her parents' fault she was not. I did not ask for her to elaborate. She does have two siblings, an older brother Levi, who attended Ellisore as well and is now a sixth grader at Bear Branch Intermediate, and a younger sister Abby, who is four. Outside of school, Ellie enjoys gymnastics and art. She's excited for upcoming gymnastics competition. She also likes babysitting her sister because it means that she can spend some time watching TV. When Ellie grows up, she shares that she wants to be a math teacher. She admires Whitney Birkin. I know I mispronounced that, I'm sorry. I did try looking at many ways to pronounce it and it was far too challenging. She's a Level 10 gymnast and she reached her first Level 10 competition when she was only 12. So, in the research that I did on her, one of the quotes I saw was that she had everything going for her at the age of 11. Ellie, you do too. She also admires Mrs. Flores, her math teacher, because she pushes her more than others and she sets her goals higher. Here are some things that the staff shared about Ellisore, excuse me, that Ellisore staff shared about Ellie. Mrs. Reich, the music teacher, said Ellie is fun-loving, respectful, and she consistently portrays our four-character traits. She works hard, is a good friend, a wonderful representative of our school. Mrs. Poulsen, her second-grade teacher, said that Ellie is fun, bright, and articulate. She always has a positive attitude and works hard to accomplish her goals. She's a compassionate friend and student. Mrs. Anderson, her third-grade math teacher, said Ellie is one of the hardest workers she's had the opportunity to call one of her own. She has a heart of gold and is full of compassion and kindness. She's a type of student that teachers wish that they could clone. Ellie will represent EES perfectly. Personally, I know that Ellie always puts her best foot forward and is empathetic towards others. I can honestly say that Ellisore is a better place because of Ellie and we are excited to see what her future holds in store.
Awesome.
Alright, Case, if you'll come forward.
Good evening. Thank you, School Board, for allowing us to recognize our students. It is an honor and it is a pleasure to work in a district where our students really do come first, and I appreciate that. This is Case Madison. He is a two-time Student of the Month, fourth-grade Student of the Month from Parkway, and sixth-grade Student of the Month for Bear Branch Intermediate. And I found out that he was a two-time Student of the Month when I was trying to explain how he was going to stand up here and do the pledge and he said, "I know how to do that, I've done it before." I told him earlier, I said, "You're better on the microphone than most people, so perhaps you should prepare a speech for tonight." So, Case is one of our sixth graders. He is here tonight and supported with his parents, his grandparents, and his sisters, Morgan and Mallory, who he says are very sweet. He talked a lot about what he likes to do outside of school, and that is spend time with his family, which I think is a testament to his mom and dad and how they're raising him. They spend a lot of time in the evenings, they have dinner every night, where they catch up on their, whatever they've done throughout the day and whatever things might be going on in their lives, and they live busy lives. And he also said that his sisters and him like to take bike rides through the neighborhood, and there's a big hill somewhere in the neighborhood. What do you guys call it? The Big Drop. So be careful of the Big Drop if you're running around that neighborhood. He also says that his family likes to get together and play board games frequently, and he and his dad like to spend time at the park tossing the football around. Case is an excellent student, and I will get to all of that later, but I want to share with you some of the things that he's involved in at Bear Branch Intermediate. He is our President of Student Council. He is a member of the Art Club and he is a member of the Media Club, Digital Media Club, where he is also one of their writers. And he also is in all advanced academic classes. In fact, he's also here tonight to collect an award for being first in Science Fair in his category. So he let me know too that he knew about the board meeting already because he would be here for that. So, on top of all of those, Case also had art, two pieces of art that made it into the district art show for the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo, and then one of those pieces was chosen to move on to the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo. Very talented young man right here, who when he grows up said he would like to be a lawyer or he said perhaps an engineer or an architect, because those two things would help him get to use his math and art, which are his two favorite subjects. He has not decided on a school yet, but he does know that whenever he graduates from high school, he'd like to attend a college where he can go into being a lawyer, an engineer, or an architect, and play sports, and he really just wants a school that has a great balance of both. It's a lot to think about for a sixth grader. One of the top character traits he thinks is important is kindness, because he said that is the basis for every friendship. And I think that says a lot about Case. So as teachers, there are several of them here tonight, but Mrs. Shore, his math teacher, who he mentioned when we spoke, said Case is one of the most outstanding students I've ever had the pleasure to teach. He's a self-motivated learner. He will not rest until the how is explained. He's also very creative. He contributes to several clubs and class projects that utilize his special skill set. He serves on Student Council and volunteers to help whenever a need arises. He's always full of great ideas. Ms. McKinney, his art teacher, who he also really cherishes, said Case Madison is an amazing kid. He's eager to learn, self-driven, and well above his years in artistic talent. Case is also helpful in class. His peers look to him for encouragement and creative advice, which he willingly shares. He's a talented young man whose future is limitless. Mrs. Stout, his science teacher, said it is truly a joy and a blessing to have Case as a student. He works very hard in class, enjoys being challenged, and has a servant's heart. He is quick to lead and guide his peers in various tasks, but also in Student Council as our president. He leads each Student Council meeting with humility and confidence. It is clear that his peers look up to him and respect his character. Ms. Sutter, his language arts teacher, said he is an exemplary student and he excels in her class and also leads by example. When he doesn't understand a concept, he takes the initiative to ask for further explanation. This proves his love for learning. Besides academics, he is arguably most important, and arguably most important is that Case is a very well-rounded kid. He's kind, compassionate, and he truly cares about his classmates. Case Madison, congratulations on being a two-time Student of the Month. We're super proud to have you represent Bear Branch Intermediate today.
So we'll, if she shows up, we've got one student running a little late. When she shows up, we'll burn her up here, and we'll just keep moving. Alright, so Ellie, if you and Case will come back up here, sorry. You know the drill, right? Alright, Dr. Garza.
Okay. Well, it's my pleasure to, once again, to introduce the Magnolia ISD Teacher of the Month. Our nominee, our winner this month, is Mrs. Mary Meeks, who's a third-grade math teacher at Bear Branch Elementary. This is her fourth year in the district. She came to a straight-eyed college from Louisiana Lafayette, Virginia Cajun, right? Okay, am I that right? She is joined tonight with her husband, children, sister, extended family, so forth, and she's also getting her master's degree right now in CNI from Sam Houston State University. So, teaching, lots of kids, and getting a master's degree, pretty impressive. When I talked to Mr. Albert about his nominee, his face lights up. He is so grateful for the work that she does for us. Says she's a joy to have on campus, very positive, great leader, and so for that, we are eternally grateful for you, Ms. Meeks.
Mr. Adcox, Board of Trustees, Dr. Stevens, it's my pleasure to present to you Teacher of the Month, Ms. Mary Meeks from Bear Branch Elementary. Mary is joined tonight by her husband, Brandon, and their two children, Claire, who's going to be three next month, and Chase, who's going to be one-year-old, or is one-year-old. I think they're out in the hallway right now. Mary teaches third grade and she is in her fourth year of teaching, all of which have been at Bear Branch Elementary, either in second or third grade. She is currently working on her master's in Curriculum and Instruction, as Dr. Garza said, from Sam Houston State University. Ms. Meeks is a leader within her third-grade team, serving as PLC facilitator. Her innovative lessons and can-do attitude have ensured the success of her math students this year. Knowing the importance of working together as a team with parents, Mary dedicated her time at the beginning of this year creating a parent academy. Through this online platform, Mary is able to communicate standards that are being taught, and she addresses misconceptions of mathematical concepts through interactive videos of herself teaching. ThinkCon Academy. And for those of you that are parents of elementary students, I wish I had that resource a few years back. One of Mary's team members reported that just this past week, while supervising children on the playground, she said how much she truly loves her job. She stated that she loves the challenge, the connection with her students, and the fast-paced environment. Her students are always eager to get to Ms. Meeks's class so that they can learn collaboratively in small-group stations. When I first met Ms. Meeks back in January, she asked me to give her honest feedback. Mary, I'm very pleased tonight to state publicly that you're doing a fantastic job, and I challenge you to keep growing and doing what is best for kids. Congratulations on this great honor.
So I try really, really hard to make all of my students feel like this is a positive, happy place to be and to learn. I try to pick up on when students are having a hard time and make sure that they feel listened to and heard and accepted. And then, aside from that, I try to make sure I have really strong routines in my classroom then the kids are able to learn and be successful no matter what. So I think about that a lot with my own students, like what are they going to remember about me? Like, are they going to remember I was the teacher that was patient with them? Are they going to remember that I was the teacher, you know, that was boring or exciting or fun or, you know? And I want them to think back on third grade and have like positive memories of their third-grade math teacher. One of the things I love about math is if they don't understand where we're at, it's very easy to take a step back, right, and go to one step before, or if they can understand where we're at, it's really easy to take one step forward. One of the things we've actually started in my classroom pretty recently is differentiated data-driven stations. So students analyze their own tests, where they're easily able to identify their strong points and then their areas of growth. And then with the things they're trying to grow on, they have a review area and they can get on the computer and there are review videos that they can access to be re-taught. That's really awesome because we're using technology for them to be re-taught in the moment when they need it, when they want it. As I was going to school, I realized that I actually loved teaching. I didn't, when I started school, I wasn't thinking that that was going to be enough. Like it wasn't going to fulfill me enough, I needed more than that. And then, as I continued through school, I realized it is enough. Like every single one of these kids is different, and they have different strengths and different weaknesses, and that it was enough for me to be their teacher, it was more than enough.
We have the best teachers in this district. Every month, these videos just get me. Thank you so much. Magnolia Education is thrilled to award you, Ms. Meeks, the February Teacher of the Month. We included Chick-fil-A, Cane's Chicken, Green Go's, Heeling, Key Spa, and HEB are thrilled to present you with this award.
Congratulations, Ms. Meeks. We're proud of you. Hey, and Ellie, you get ready to be a math teacher. You come back and see us, and you too could be the Teacher of the Month right up here just like that, and MEF will give you a big prize, alright? We won't see you back here. Ms. Meeks, hey, thank you so much for all you do for our kiddos, and we're just so happy that you're here with us in Magnolia. And thank you to the merchants for coming out and celebrating our students and our teachers. I really appreciate that. Alright, you ready? Hold on, let him.
Mr. Campbell's always got to put on a show for everybody.
Preseda, correct.
Hi, I'm Brian Cooper. I'm the Principal of Alpha Academy. Dr. Stevens, Mr. Adcox, board members, thank y'all for allowing us to present Students of the Month here. I'm here to present Preseda Puebla Hummerio, I've been practicing all day on that, as our Student of the Month. She's supported here by her mother, and we have some staffers, we have Ms. Dree, our counselor from Alpha. We have Ms. Lorio, our science teacher, Ms. Brubake, our secretary, Ms. Harsh, our history teacher, they're here scattered. Raise your hands, there they are, there's the Alpha Crew back there, okay? At Alpha, we do things a little bit differently, so we wanted to make a grand entrance for our Student of the Month presentation as well. Preseda came to us this year, at the beginning of the year, and to say that school was not her favorite thing to do is just a little bit of an understatement, but she decided to choose to come to Alpha to try something a little bit different. And at first, she was going to be there, but she wasn't going to be happy about being there. But, as she stayed with us and she kept trying and kept doing things and kept doing a little bit more and a little bit more, she started to feel more successful and started to grow a little bit. And that's one of the things we preach at Alpha, is you have to grow to graduate. In the beginning, Preseda would always have her mad face, what I call, I joke with her now, is her mad face, and Preseda has the best smile you've ever seen, and we finally get to see that now. We've seen that grow, and it's amazing and beautiful, and that was the one thing that every teacher, that whenever we were picking our students, was like, Preseda has grown so much, and it is so awesome to see her enjoying school and being successful and really happily seeing that smile every day as opposed to her mad face. And so it's awesome, and it's why we do what we do, especially at Alpha Academy. When Preseda came to us, she was behind and was in danger of not graduating, and Preseda has worked so hard and so diligently, she has earned 10, 11 credits now? 11 credits as of yesterday, because she just finished another class. And for those of you that don't know how impressive that is, in normal, regular, traditional high school, students get seven credits a year. So she's done over a year's worth of high school credit work in less than a year, and she's now, ooh, on track to graduate early. She has two credits left and will probably be done by spring break, probably, so. And she's done all that while working at Water Burger. So if you want to take your Valentine out after the, do it tonight, she won't be there to serve you, but maybe tomorrow night she will be. But she does all that while working at the same time, and so it is super, super impressive for what she has done and how much she has grown, and it's been just awesome to watch her grow and now see her come to school and smile every single day and support other students on our campus. So that is why we chose Preseda as our Student of the Month. So, thank you, Preseda.
Apparently cutting in line at this place is frowned upon. I wanted to, Mr. Adcox and Dr. Stevens, thank you for having us tonight. I'd like, come on over. I'd like to let you know that we just returned from a huge Music Educators Conference, one of the biggest in the world, for sure the biggest in the United States, and we have over 14,000 members. There were close to 40,000 participants at this year's convention, and it's a big honor to go. It's a big honor to be a participant, but it's certainly a big honor to be invited. And this year, we had Magnolia High School Corral, under the direction of Ms. Jennifer Franz, be invited to be one of the choirs that was showcased. And Dr. Stevens and Mr. Quinn and Mr. Braun were able to come up there and support with them. And then we went out to meet Tiaras, and will probably never be invited back to that restaurant, but we had a great celebration. And then also among this group, we have several teacher, future teachers, so raise your hand if you're in that group, Texas Future Music Educators. So, Dr. Stevens, when we talk about recruiting our own, you guys, if you're good teachers, come back and we'll hire you. If you're poor teachers, apply anywhere you want to, but not here, okay? So, without further ado, and the school board, you may want to step down, because this is a great performance, and you may want to see it from this angle. They did perform, I believe, six songs at the place, and I requested one, and Ms. Franz is so tough, she said, "I'll choose it and it'll be a surprise." Like, you ain't getting nothing. Well, she told me right before, "I'm getting my wish." So this is my song that I selected. So y'all enjoy Yonder Come Day.
Oh, day, yonder come day. Oh, day, yonder come day. Oh, day, yonder come day. Day done broke in my soul, yonder come day. Morning day, yonder come day. Morning day, yonder come day. Morning day, yonder come day. Day done broke in my soul, yonder come day. Brand new day, yonder come day. Brand new day, yonder come day. Brand new day, yonder come day. Day done broke in my soul, yonder come day. Come on, child.
Hush, hush, somebody's calling my name. Hush, somebody's calling my name. Hush, hush, somebody's calling my name.
My lord, oh my lord, what shall I do? What shall I do? Oh, day, yonder come day. Oh, day, yonder come day. Oh, day, yonder come day. Day done broke in my soul, yonder come day. On my knees, yonder come day. On my knees, yonder come day. On my knees, yonder come day. Day done broke in my soul, yonder come day. Heard him say, yonder come day. Heard him say, yonder come day. Heard him say, yonder come day. Day done broke in my soul, yonder come day. Come on, child. Steal away, steal away, steal away to Jesus. Steal away, steal away, I ain't got long to stay here. Steal away, steal away, steal away to Jesus. Steal away, steal away, I ain't got long to stay here. Sweet, sweet sharing. Come and come and carry me out. Sweet, sweet sharing. I ain't got long to stay here. Oh, day, yonder come day. Yonder come day. Oh, day, yonder come day. Day done broke in my soul, yonder come day. Morning day, yonder come day. Morning day, yonder come day. Morning day, yonder come day. Day done broke in my soul, yonder come day. Brand new day, yonder come day. Brand new day, yonder come day. Brand new day, yonder come day. Day done broke in my soul, yonder come day. Come on, child.
(singing) Come on, child.
(singing) Yonder come day.
(singing) Come on, child.
(singing) Yonder come day.
(singing) Come on, child.
(singing) Yonder come day.
(singing) Day done broke in my soul, yonder come day.
They're going to stay for a minute while we honor one of their All-Staters, and then they're gonna head out. These guys are so busy, they just finished a musical, Les Mis, and then they did the Texas Music Educators Association, they're also going to be involved in a magical festival coming up soon, and then also several of them, how many of you are in one act play, coming up in theaters? So, if you guys head over that way, and then Carlin, if you'll stay, I'd like to ask the students, who are All-State musicians that come on up, and their head director, would you please come up with them? Head director, come up with them. So, we have a process in Texas called the All-State Process, and what we do there is, we, 70,000 students begin this process, and they try out at different levels, and so they learn the music and so forth, and then they move on up. And so, we start with 75, 70,000, and then at the end, we have 1,875 students selected to join 18 ensembles, and they go to state, what we call state. And so these students were selected, and we have seven students up here tonight to celebrate, and it's just an honor to be near them, because they're really masters of their trade, and these, these teachers, even though influential, they just sometimes are the guide on the side and just encouraging them, and then helping them reach their, their goals. So I want to have you welcome these guys as I introduce them. The first one's gonna represent Magnolia West High School Choir, would you step forward, Mason, and this, his teacher is Ms. Sylvia Garza, and Mr. Veerken, would you stand up? That's the assistant director there. And Mason is a junior, he's a tenor II, he's also the drum major in the band, and he's in junior high, I used to kid him that we needed to get him a tutu, because he had like seven pieces of artwork in the art show, he was the lead in the play, he was, he was in the band, and then also did really well in the choir. So, he was in the mixed choir, and he's a three-time All-Stater, like making it is a miracle, three times he made it, and that's the first time in Magnolia West history, so let's give him a big round of applause. So, thank, he went with us to Foga de Chao, and he can also eat some meat, that's for sure. Magnolia West Band, Steve, would you step forward? And his head band director is Mr. Mike Wilson, we also have Mr. Matt Power in the back, will you wave at us? And Ty Livingston's here, any other Magnolia West assistant band directors, thank you, appreciate it. He's a percussionist, and Steve, when he was moving up the ladder, he was first chair at the, at the All-State Symphonic Band, and he's, he's a second-time All-Stater. And so, we want to thank you, congratulate you. He also went with us to Foga de Chao, and he liked a lot of rice, he wasn't a meat eater, so, Ms. Garza wasted 50 bucks on him that day. Next, we have from Magnolia High School Choir, Carlin, would you step forward? Ms. Franz is, is her teacher, Ms. Taya Persinger is the assistant director, she couldn't be here tonight, she's a senior, she's an alto, and she made the women's choir there and sang some beautiful songs, some of them were a little wonky, like wanted to be a pirate, to push men overboard when they could be at home writing, it was weird. But, they did a beautiful job, the words were weird, but the song was great. So, congratulations to you, we're very proud of you, let's give her a round of applause. Now, next we have Magnolia High School Band, under the direction of Mr. Bob Medina, we also have Patrick Beavers here, Anthony Jackson, any other Magnolia High School, okay, thank you for all your hard work. We want to first introduce to you Aiden Clark, Aiden's a junior, he was selected, he's a trombone player, he was selected to the All-State Jazz Ensemble, and the cool thing, he's a second chair there, and he was the giddiest guy, when he got to San Antonio, he was like, he wanted to take the world by storm, and every time I saw him, he never changed his face, that face you see right there was there all weekend, even after eight hours of rehearsal. His percussion, I mean his jazz clinician, was a Grammy winner, Barry Saxophone, and then he got to play one of the solos at the concert, and he even wrote part of a piece, and the composer of the song recognized him, so we want to thank you for that. And, he's under the direction of Bob Medina, and he looks like that's, he's gonna sew that on his letterman's jacket, so give Aiden a big round of applause. Next is Ismael Magana, and he's a clarinet player, and he was 12th chair in the Symphonic Band, and you can imagine like 70,000 people, 12th chair, huge deal, he did a great job, and he's, 10th, I'm sorry, 10th grade, sorry, I gave you a promotion, 10th grade, and we want to recognize him. Ismael, congratulations. Next we have senior Jace Mitchell, I was his elementary principal, I think that's why he's so successful, and, and he's a senior French horn player, and he and the whole state was third chair in the Symphonic Band, and so we want to congratulate Jace for being an All-Stater, congratulations. And this, this, the last guy I want to introduce you to is a senior, his name is Cole Maney, would you step forward with Mr. Medina? He's a, he plays a bass clarinet, he was first chair in the entire state in the 5A Symphonic Band, and this guy is a three-time All-Stater.
Wow.
Three-time All-Stater, congratulations, congratulations. And one of the best parts of my week was Friday night, we went to a restaurant on the Riverwalk, and one of Mr. Medina's former students had a band playing, a jazz band playing, and Mr. Medina brought his students with their instruments, and the guy let him get up there and do some solos and things like that. So that was pretty cool, all these people walking by on the Riverwalk, seeing him and, seeing them and having a great time, so, please help me thank all these wonderful students and their teachers. Carlin, come up here. Pretty ladies up front. And, and before they leave, if you're a parent of one of these students, would you please stand up? We want to honor you for all the time you've spent, the money on private lessons, the bus driving, the taxi service, thank you. Yes. I'm giving him the mic, and I shouldn't.
10 seconds, because I've had this question before, the patches that you see the gentlemen receiving, they have, the company that produces them has options, and so I sent this to the kids, I said, "Hey, tell me which one you want, and we're gonna take care of it for you." So, Aiden chose the one in the shape of Texas, and Cole and Ismael chose theirs, and then Jace chose, you know, his, and I said, "Well, why that one?" He said, "Well, it's gonna go next to my All-State Lacrosse Patch." So, yeah, he's an All-State Lacrosse-er as well, so that's what the difference is, it's the exact same patch, the exact same thing, but the guys decided how it's gonna fit on their jacket, which I thought was super cool. Thank you.
One more round of applause, good job. And we're here to celebrate your art, would you please come forward? And art teachers, would you come join the students that are coming up here? And I'd also like to ask you, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Slater, Ms. Filinski, Mr. Morley, and Ms. Vinghaus to come on up.
Dr. Campbell, really quick interruption before Mr. Medina and Ms. Franz leave the room.
Ms. Franz?
The first time I heard the jazz band that Mr. Medina brought to Magnolia ISD was at a district function, and I thought we had paid someone professionally to come play for us, because they were amazing. That program has continued to grow. Ms. Franz, this was my first year to go to the Dickens Dinner, and what happens with these kids who reach down deep and become actors and singers and gracious hosts, and it comes from the top of your program and through your entire staff, and you know that it builds a confidence that will never leave them, regardless of what path they take in life, and I could not appreciate what you guys do more. Thank you.
Alright, next we have the rodeo art, we have 420 students, we have 420 pieces of art that come to us for the rodeo art show, and it's adjudicated here, and then we take a certain number of artwork down to Houston, and then they're, they're judged down there again, and then they keep the ones that they want to continue on with their show, and then these particular pictures tonight are just pictures of the artwork, because that artwork is down in Houston, so we want to honor these students. And so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna call your name, and then you'll come over, and principals, if that's your student, come on with them, because I'm gonna have you hand them the hardware over here. And then, at the end of the, in a minute, you're gonna give us a break, I believe, and during that break, I want you to guys come celebrate the students, but then students and parents, when you leave, just take this piece of artwork, take it with you, because it's just a picture of it, but that would be something you can keep in, at your house. So we're gonna start with the Best of Show in high school. And high school Best of Show this year is Emily Chartran, would you please come forward? And Mr. Quinn and Ms. McIntosh, come on over with her, and her piece of artwork is called The Old Dirt Road, it's over here, this piece of artwork, and then this is her hardware, nice little trophy, and give her a big round of applause. Next we have the junior high Best of Show, Sienna Shackelford, are you here? Come on over. And, we're gonna have Ms. Roberson and Mr. Slater come on over, and this is her hardware, and she's gonna stand next to this picture, which is hers, which is called Wonder Bushes. So let's give her a big round of applause. She might need help carrying that out. And then, elementary Best of Show, you guys can step one over there. Elementary Best of Show, elementary is not decided by our schools, but by the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo, so it's K through 5, and so our intermediate school 5th graders were judged in that category. So the Best of Show this year for Magnolia ISD is Grace Zeller, would you please come on over? And Ms. Ratcliffe and Ms. Filinski, this is called The Buffalo, right here, and she's the Best of Show. The next category is called Gold Medal, and so, we're gonna start, celebrate with high school first, senior high school. We have Grayson Bertrand, I think her grandma's out there cheering somewhere, Grayson Bertrand, would you come on over? And also, is Ms. Ortiz here? Ms. Ortiz is here, and Mr. Morley, and she received the Gold Medal Award for her artwork called Sanctuary of Decay, sounds a little creepy, and it is, but it's a nice piece of art. And those of you that know Ms. Nook for years, that was here in, in the art program, she is actually working with the church now, and Ms. Ortiz is her replacement, and we are so excited to have her, so thanks for being here tonight. The next Gold Medal in high school goes to Haley, wait a sec, would you come on over here? And also, Ms. McIntosh, and Mr. Quinn, and here's the Gold Medal. There you go. And the piece of artwork is Tending the Herd, and she's an 11th grader. So you'll have to come up during the break and look at this artwork, but it doesn't do it justice, remember, it's just a picture of the real thing, but if you like this, you would really love the piece of artwork. Next we have a Gold Medal Award winner in junior high, and that's by Leighton King, and come on over, and Ms. Vinghaus and that guy are coming over. Mr. Byers, hey, how are you? So, there you go, and it's called Wakey Wakey, I love the title, it's this cow looking right into the camera, Wakey Wakey. Another title I saw that was really cute at the show is this cow licking its calf, and the title was, "Mom, you're embarrassing me," I thought that was cute, too. So, I love Wakey Wakey, good job. The Gold Medal Award winner for elementary is Melody Perez, come on over, and Ms. Ratcliffe, if you'll join us, and Ms. Filinski, that's the next medal there, and hers is called The Tepee down here, The Tepee, and we want to celebrate with her, congratulations to Melody. Lexi's not here. Sherry, Lexi's not here, okay. And then, I want to acknowledge Lexi, this is called The Lone Bull, right here, and she's not able to make it tonight, but we still want to celebrate with her, and let me give you this, Ms. McIntosh, to make sure you get that, so I don't leave with the hardware and forget, there you go. And then, last but not least, we have Lily Lyons, and this is, she's from Magnolia West, and so we asked Ms. Ortiz and Mr. Morley to come on up and celebrate with her, it's called Glimpsing Through the Pedals, down here, and here's her award, and let's give her a big round of applause. And parents, I'm very serious about this artwork, please take it with you, because I want this board to be empty at the end of the evening. Ms. McIntosh, will you grab Lexi's and get it to her? It is an honor to serve the students of Magnolia in the fine arts area, and you can see why I love my job, all these students, thank you for the teachers and the principals for your big support, let's give them one more big round of applause.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Campbell. I'm always amazed at the artwork, I could spend the rest of my life and probably not get anything to look like that, so, I'm always amazed at that, and the choir, wow, that was moving.
Yeah, I'm not positive, but I think if you were gonna be the best district in the state of Texas in the arts department, it would look something like what we had here today, and some amazing thinking, with all-state kids recognized from all of our, both of our high school campuses, across the music department, and such wonderful artists that we've got in this district, great teachers, a lot of great things happening in the arts, we do arts in Magnolia.
It's amazing. Alright, next up is our science director, Ms. Cherie Gallimore, and our former board member and local business owner, Mr. Glenn Addison.
I just wanted to say, is that on? I just want to say thank you for allowing us to recognize these amazing students. If I could get the science fair students to all come up and stand on this side over here in a line. While they are coming up, I want to recognize their teachers that are here, so my 6th grade science teachers that have worked so hard with them and getting all of their work, can y'all please stand up? Can y'all give them a round of applause? We have Mr. Voss, Ms. Bellamawitz, and Ms. Stout here. Hey, when we take a picture, can y'all come up from the picture, please? Alright, and while I get the Chromebooks out, I want to thank Mr. Addison, he so generously donates to our students and our science fair, which allows us to be able to give them a Chromebook every year, so I'm gonna have him say a couple of words while I go get the Chromebooks, so that we can give them to the students.
Good evening. 50 years ago, in 1972, when I was Casey's age, we moved to Magnolia. Where we're sitting was woods, where your houses are was woods. There were three campuses, our district was very poor then, we didn't have enough buses, so each seat had three kids, and the aisle was also full of kids. The maintenance department made our hurdles out of pipe and one-befores, you didn't want to hit that hurdle, because they didn't fall over very easy. This district has come light years into the future, and it's because of talent that we've seen tonight, it's because of character traits that include a strong work ethic, kindness, caring, encouragement, teachers that are dedicated to helping improve the system, administrators and school board members that are dedicated to the same thing. And this community has been a blessing to my wife and I. Magnolia Funeral Home, well, my competitor said he would put us out of business in one year, and that's been 18 years ago. So, the Lord's been gracious to us, the community has been gracious to us, and I love this place, and I want to encourage the students and their attempts to do good, and so years ago, I asked Dr. Stevens and said, "What is something that even a child who ranks last in their class has a chance at winning?" And he said, "Science awards, science fair awards." And, and I like that, because you know, some of us don't test well. Some of us have not been raised in houses that, where your parents had a lot of education. My people are sharecroppers, my daddy had a junkyard, complete with a junkyard dog, okay? And so I was the first person in my family to ever go to college, I don't think I could have done that if I hadn't received a pretty good education from Magnolia ISD, even though we were poor. So it's refreshing to see that as the Lord has blessed this district financially, we've just grown and grown and grown, and we see more and more awards, and we see more and more talent, and that's refreshing. And so, it's my wife Lori and I's honor to be able to sponsor every year, something that even the poorest child who may rank last in their class, and I'm not saying that's the case here, I'm just saying, I want to give everybody an opportunity to improve themselves and to be recognized for their God-given abilities and talents. And that's what happens at the science fair, you know, we are driving machines today, we are living in places, we are using technology that began when youngsters got involved and said, "Can I create something?" And they put their talents to use, and I'm convinced that that's where so many of today's advances have come from. I want to do my part to encourage that, and so we feel, my wife and I feel honored to be able to do this, the Lord, as I said, has been gracious to us, we want to share and put back in the community, and so it's our honor to do it. So thank you for watching these kids receive these, these blessings. So thank you for watching these kids receive these blessings tonight.
So what we'll do is, when I call your name, come over here, and you'll get your Chromebook, and then we'll line up on this side, and then we'll take a picture. Okay? We have eight categories, and first and second place from each category is receiving a Chromebook. So for Behavior and Social Science, we have Case Madison. Macy Albrighton. For Biochemistry and Health, we have Kate Fairweather. Ariana Lopez. For Chemistry, we have, we had a tie, so we have, oh, let's see. Iera Taylor? Did I say it right? I hope so. Violet Burkholder. Emily Warner. For Engineering, we have Owen Speck. Jackson Ilert. For Physical Science, we have Sarah Skinner. Swayze Niglianz. I knew I was gonna mess it up. Say it for me again. Nigliazo, sorry. Swayze Nigliazo. For Environmental Science and Animal Science, we have Reagan Callum. Abigail Steinball. For Plant Science, we have Ethan Leffin. Ruby Laskowski. And Zachary Mc, sorry. You know, when you get on a roll here, McCaskill. Sorry for that, Zach. All right. Where do you want? Do you want to bring him back this way? Come on back this way, so we can take a picture.
All right. Glenn, thanks again. That's very, that's very important. I got, my son won one. He's a junior now at West, and he still uses it. And it's awesome that that family chooses to do that for our students. Yeah. So if any of y'all want to come back and be a science teacher here at Magnolia, we'd love to have you. Dr. Todd said he will personally talk to you. All right. So next up, we have MEF Board President, Ms. Norris.
Thank you for inviting us tonight. Valentine's Day, we're crashing your party. Good evening. My name is Stacia Norris, and I'm honored to be the MEF President. The Magnolia Education Foundation is a group of hard-working volunteers that work tirelessly to increase funds for MISD to encourage innovation, creativity, and a passion for education. Through fundraising events such as our golf tournament, which is April 14th, mark your calendars, we still have lots of sponsorship opportunities available. That was a shameless plug. Our galas and our Breakfast with Santa, MEF is able to support programs such as Employee Partner, Star Educator, Apple Grants, Transportation Awards, Teacher of the Month, Reading Jubilee, Student of MISD Employee Scholarships, and Grants. This year, MEF, along with the Ms. Martha Morris, have established the Coach Morris Grant and the Coach Morris Scholarships. It is an honor for MEF to be a part of the Coach Morris legacy. If you would indulge me, I would like to introduce some of the remarkable MEF volunteers that are here tonight. I looked up the definition of selfless. It reads, "Concerned more with the needs and wishes of others than with one's own self." I'm about to introduce the most selfless team of volunteers that I've ever had the privilege to work beside. Dasha Owens, our past president. Melissa Boland. Melissa Boland, our VP of Fundraising. Tina Slansky, our Treasurer. Then we have Tammy Freeman, our Secretary. Denise Myers, our Chairman of Directors. Kate Hope, Communications. Amelia Lindley, Communications. We have our West Campus Liaison, Rachel Terry. Our East Campus Liaison, Katie Jean. And our Star Educator Director, Dixie Babino. And if any of our MEF volunteers are here tonight, please come on up and join us. Come on up. So tonight, we are here to celebrate and honor the recipients of our 2021 and 2022 Grants. This is the heart of MEF, and that's why it is so appropriate that we are here tonight on Valentine's Day to introduce these special educators. I know there are a lot of teachers here that want me to be quiet so we can get on to the good stuff. So I'm going to turn this over to Melissa Boland, our Grant Chairperson. And I think we have a video.
Thank you. You probably heard me screaming in all of those videos. I apologize now. Thank you so much, Magnolia ISD Board of Trustees, for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Melissa Boland. I am the VP of Fundraising, but I'm also the Grant Director for the MEF for 2022-2023 year. Each year, Magnolia Education Foundation is honored to award grants to our educators throughout the district. This year, we challenged our educators to bring us thinking outside-the-box ideas and innovative ideas. They surpassed that and more. This year, along with the MEF Grant Program, we were able to introduce a new grant that you saw at the end of that video. It's made possible by Ms. Martha Morris. For those of you who do not know who Ms. Morris is, she is the mother of the late Coach Alex Morris, who was a soccer coach at Magnolia West High School. She chose MEF to honor her son's legacy by offering grants and scholarships throughout the district. In Coach Morris's name, we will get to do this each and every year. This year, MEF is proud to say, with the introduction of the Coach Morris Grant and the continued support of the Reading Jubilee in the amount of $10,000, MEF awarded educators across the district with over $80,000 in grants. I know we probably have a few people missing tonight, because it is Valentine's. They're probably out with their loves. But if you were a teacher, and I say your name and your grant, would you come up and, and stand with me at the front of the room? Sonia Wolfram. I apologize if I butcher your name. She received two grants. One for the Jim U. Robots and the Gravitrax Marble Run. Sarah Kasuba, Karen Gresham, for the Parent Educator Resource Library. Y'all come on up. Rory Fletcher, for the Ukulele Small Instruments That Build Bridges to Big Things. Misty Anderson, Fun with Fluency. Melissa Eamon, Let's Grow a Garden. Let's Grow a Garden. MIS 5th Grade Science Team, and Christina Foley, for the OMG Robots. Ms. Bernstein, Ms. Patczynski, and Ms. Johnson, for Social Skills and Sensory Resource Room. Haley Long, for Button Making. Rebecca Christensen, for the Lego Storytelling. Nicole Zink, A River Runs Through the Halls. Lisa Wathan, Lab Equipment. Ms. Stewart, Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Swanke, and Ms. Mannan, for Read to Succeed, decodable readers. Julie Haronda, Microscope Imagers. Heather Callum and Katie Tran, for Vox Books, Books That Talk. Amy Whitehead, Mentoring for Success. Diana Baron, for Lecture and Reading. Katie Phillips, Fill the Rhythm Project. She's here. Tricia Hacker, Let's Grow Readers. Ms. Burna, Ms. Gandy, for Parents Plushies and Picture Books. Ms. Engelvecky. Ms. Durden, Watch Me Grow. Ms. Todd and Ms. Burnham, for watch, for Science Labs. I tried. Misty Thomas, for Q Balls. Ms. Bernstein, again, for the PASS Program. Ms. Prescott, Ms. Withrow. Ms. Nelson, Ms. Wells, Ms. Hidalgo, and Ms. Estrada, for their Sensory Motor Intelligence Lab Experience, The Smile Program. And last one, but no, nope, sorry. Just kidding. Natalie Castelou, Everyone Reads, in Magnolia ISD. And last but not least, our first-ever Coach Morris Grant in the amount of $9,995.29. Dixie Lacholo and Jamie Roberts, Building Independence in Students with Significant Cognitive Visibilities. Lacho Lay! At this time, I'm gonna introduce Tina Slansky. She is our Treasurer. She will be presenting the checks to our winners.
As you saw in the video, there was a lot of excitement for so many teachers. We would like to again congratulate each and every one of you, and we look forward to your innovative projects coming to life. As the Treasurer of MEF, and on behalf of the Board, I would like to present this check to MISD in the amount of $70,461. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you, guys. Means a lot to our teachers, means a lot to our kids. Because at the end of the day, it's about the kids. So I really appreciate what y'all do for our kids. So, I'd love to tell you that the rest of the meeting just gets more exciting, but that's not necessarily true. But we are voting on the calendar tonight. So if you want to be the first to see the calendar for next year, I believe that's coming up. But at this time, it concludes our presentation and recognitions. We'll now recess. It says five minutes. We rarely make that. But, so those of you who would like to take this opportunity to leave may do so. I would encourage you to take a look at the artwork if you hadn't. And parents, please do pick up the artwork. All right. We're gonna get started. Chris will get mad. I'll do it once. Ms. Hinkleman, do we have anybody signed up to speak? Just the one, all right. Okay, then I need to read this. Participants must have turned in a request form 15 minutes prior to any start of this meeting. Participation is limited to three minutes. Any complaint or charge brought against an employee by name opposition for which resolution has not been sought in accordance with policy should be pursued through the district's grievance policy. Please note, the Board of Trustees shall not deliberate, respond, or make decisions regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda that is posted. So with that, Ms. Russell, who is a MISD resident, wants to speak on curriculum.
Anyway, I have come before y'all numerous times over the years about your Marxist International Baccalaureate Program. I passed, I know talking to y'all is not gonna solve anything here. So, I passed a resolution at the county level and sent it out to the school, to many voters and Republican voters. While y'all were scattering around like a bunch of cats, trying to figure out how you were gonna do damage control, that it wasn't Marxism, that it wasn't globalist, and that it didn't provide social justice, I was working with Senate Republican Executive Committee at the state level. I had a resolution submitted at the state level. I was called to testify this weekend, and I did. The resolution passed the Resolution Committee 100%. The committee as a whole passed at 59, with one abstaining and one voting no. And I'm not gonna read the whole resolution. It's basically the same that we passed at the county level, and we will submit them to different precincts across the state and start working with state legislators. Whereas, the International Baccalaureate Program is a nongovernmental organization of the United Nations, Education, Scientific, and Cultural Organization. Whereas, the International Baccalaureate Program is commissioned by the UN, made in Europe, and at odds with the principles of the American founding. The last thing, and I was so excited that they added during the Resolutions Committee, be it resolved that a copy of this resolution would be submitted to all state and federal legislatures from Texas and to all Texas school districts as applicable. I committed it as a success. I hate that y'all have platformmed Grant Ebel as the Magnolia mascot of IB. Sadly, Mr. Ebel seems like a bright young man. He would have excelled at anything he'd done. But y'all platformed him as an IB alumni. Justin Trudeau, the dictator of Canada, is an IB alumni. Kim Jong-un from North Korea is an IB alumni. And there are a host of others, of these globalist Marxist dictators across the country. And it saddens me for Grant, but he's naive. He doesn't understand Marxism, and he doesn't understand. But I can't blame him. Neither do y'all. Neither do y'all understand what a globalist education. And if you're doing it from the United And if you're doing it from the United Nations, wake up. Can you not see it on the TV every single day? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. All right, moving on to our consent agenda, this portion of the agenda consists of items to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested. Anybody have any questions? Have a chance to look it over? All right, if there aren't any questions, then I need a motion that the Board approve Consent Agenda Items A through K. Motion by Gary, seconded by Joe. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, the next one is to discuss some possible action regarding correspondence to the Texas Association of School Boards. I know that we've had some speakers, I think, come and talk about this. I have the resolution here. I'm going to read it for everybody here. It's to the Texas Association of School Boards. Thank you to, thank you for responding to the Honorable U.S. House of Representative Chip Roy on November 24 of 2021. As stated in the letter, Tasby notes, "School board meetings should be places where parents and community members are welcomed and provide the opportunity to speak and openly share their opinions and concerns on how the school in their communities are being governed. We believe this to be true, but Tasby's affiliation with the National School Boards Association is still a concern. NSBA has lost credibility and its focus is on elevating its political agenda and not advocating for public education. Nineteen states have withdrawn membership since January of 2022." I think that should be back from that. We'll check that. "And 10 Texas lawmakers have urged Tasby to sever ties with NSBA. Texas Administrative Code and Texas Government Code requires boards to complete training and continuing education hours, which Tasby provides. Still, our biggest concern is why our Texas public schools should continue to use our taxpayer dollars to support the NSBA. Our Board of Trustees urges Tasby to review the relationship with NSBA. The focus of educational support agencies should continue to advocate for public education, and if necessary, Tasby may need to consider withdrawing from that national association. Our Board of Trustees values the engagement of our students, families, and community. We serve in elected capacity, but we are also parents of current or former MISD students. School boards are elected to make decisions that are best for our students and the community we live in and serve. Parents are part of that community and have the right to advocate for their children. Being associated with NSBA and their political views does not align with our values here in Texas." So I know that on Critical Race Theory, we actually passed something before the state did concerning that, and that we did not want that in our school. See if I have any input on this and their thoughts around it?
Yeah, I would just ask a question. I mean, I'm all for this, obviously, but I'm interested to know what we hope to get, what kind of response we hope to get, what our objective is in terms of a response from Tasby by sending this.
I'm hopeful if enough other school districts, which, you know, I mean, we were some of the first ones to get rid of masks. We were, I think, the first one with Critical Race, and then the state followed soon. I'm hopeful if enough other school districts have this same view, that they'll exit that relationship. I don't know if people have been out on their website, but it's not, it's not about our kids anymore. It's about a political view, and that's, that's not educating our kids. So that's what my hope would be.
Well, and one possible consequence is that we exit our relationship with Tasby.
The problem with that is our education has to come.
From somewhere.
Yeah. And right now, the way it's regulated, unless I'm mistaken on how I read that, it has to come from Tasby. And then we would also have to come up with all the policies. And I mean, there's, there's some fallout from doing that, that we would start absorbing a bunch of extra cost by having to do all that ourselves.
I mean, if our objective here is to make our community aware of our position on this, that's great, and we should. But if our objective is to get a response out of Tasby, I would like us to have, to demonstrate some more teeth in it to get that. I mean, I don't know how to do that. I don't know the right answer. But I would love for them to be put on, responsible for responding some way, not just saying, yeah, I've seen 100 of these already. Thank you. I've, I've read this before. Don't need to read it again. I want them to say, sit up and take note and do something. That's my preference.
Anybody else? Okay, so what we can do is we can table it and rewrite it, or do we, how do you want to handle that? My gut is you have to table it and rewrite it, because you can't pass it as is and then change it would be the, if we're going to put more teeth in it, we're going to change the way it reads.
Well, it's up to you guys. I know, I'm all in favor of this thing, of course, but also want Tasby to do something with it rather than just have a nice to know and file it away, right?
I think, you know, it certainly expresses the concerns the Board has about Tasby's position, relationship to NASB. And I think that's worth at least sending that to start with. And if we feel like that as a Board, you want to take additional steps at some point, then you can move up the chain and start talking about our association with Tasby. And hopefully, as Chuck was saying, you get a collection of other districts that are sending something. They may start to realize at some point they need to make, make a change in some of their stance in that relationship. But if we don't send them something, they don't know our concerns.
Well, right. So maybe what we do, if we can agree to this, we send it to them. If they don't respond in a couple of months, we crank up the heat and do something else.
Or if we get a fluff response.
Right.
So is everybody okay with? All right. So if we're going to send this one, I need a motion that we approve to send the correspondence to the Texas Association of School Boards as presented. Motion by Kristi, seconded by Sonia. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, Dr. Bullock. Calendar. As a parent, I want to see it.
Apparently, this is the agenda item that warrants like advertising beforehand. So, yes, sir, Ms. Radcox, Dr. Stevens, members of the Board, this is the proposal in front of you for the school calendar for the 22-23 school year. Seems hard to believe that's what we're saying out loud, but it's time for that. So this is before you this evening, and it doesn't just happen overnight, though. This is a process we go through as a school district that starts back in the fall semester. And we start discussing this in our District Education Improvement Committee. And, and as a reminder to the Board, that committee is made up of a teacher elected from each campus, as well as a cross-section of some parents and community members and a few scattered district administrators. So we've been discussing the calendar and looking at options. There are some things that, as I tell that committee, are immovable objects. We must have 75,600 minutes of instruction in a calendar year. The way our calendar works, at least right now, without making some major changes that would upset a lot of things, including buses and lunches and other things that are also kind of immovable objects, we have 430 minutes of instruction a day. And, you know, once you start working through the math of that, some things make sense, right? We're, we're going to have holidays at the time. People expect us to have holidays. And so some, some of this kind of works itself out. It, it leaves you fewer options than you might think. The calendar that has come through our committee is fairly similar to the calendar we've operated with under the last couple of years. There are a couple of notable changes I want to point out to you. When we laid last year's dates onto this year's calendar, it would have required us to have teachers come back to work on August the 1st. That was wildly unpopular, let's say. So something about moving that back to August the 2nd does make a difference, at least psychologically to all of us, I think. The first day of school under this calendar is a Thursday, August the 11th. That is one day later than it was this school year. This school year, well, we started on Wednesday. It was also August the 11th, but it's a Thursday instead of a Wednesday next year. Our first day of school is one day later than the Conroe, than the calendars that were approved by Conroe and Klein at this point. You'll notice there is a full week at Thanksgiving, the two full weeks at Christmas for holidays. One thing we have done different, and this is in listening to teachers and to parents, is we've worked in, I think, some time for everybody to catch their breath in a couple of places. October is a good example of that. You'll see Columbus Day is October the 10th. We have on October the 7th, which is the Friday leading into that Monday, an early release day planned. There will be some professional development for teachers, but it will be an earlier release day for kids going into a three-day weekend. That also just so happens to correspond with the very end of the first nine weeks. So it makes a lot of sense instructionally and just with the cycle of that kind of thing to have professional development at that time and let everybody catch their breath and get, and get a running start for the second nine weeks. We also have changed how we approach Election Day. In November, this year, Election Day was a holiday, and we came to school on Monday. Not our best day for attendance, I don't think. So going back to the drawing board, this year, coming up for the 22-23 year, we have the Election Day on the 8th being a professional development day, and then a holiday on Monday, the 1st for staff and for students. Another chance to catch your breath, but also makes sense with kind of our dual responsibilities of, since our campuses are polling places, they need to be open and available to everybody to come and vote. But we are also charged with keeping our kids safe and running a pretty secure environment. So having kids in buildings on days when we have elections has gotten to a place that it doesn't make very much sense. There are several districts in the area that are doing something similar with their calendars. There's an early release day on the last day of December before the break. Moving into the spring, in February, which is the longest stretch of the year, you may notice that this month, there is a early release day on the 17th, a Friday, going into a Monday holiday on the 20th for President's Day. And again, that's kind of your, your early release into a three-day weekend to give everyone a chance to catch their breath. There was another early release day right before spring break, which is the end of the third nine weeks. So again, following that same instructional cycle. And then you'll see a holiday for Good Friday and then into the end of the year. So what this does is it builds a calendar that meets the state requirements, we believe, takes into account the things that we have heard from teachers and people in the community that they value. And this is the calendar we present to you. It's a calendar that we spent a lot of months with in the committee, and it came out with unanimous approval to recommend to you guys this evening. So I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Does spring break line up with the universities in the state?
It lines up with some of the universities in the state. It's a great question. So here is.
I have one on it. Except for Baylor.
I don't know what the deal is, Dr. Mop.
How about A&amp;M? Does it line up with A&amp;M?
So here, here's where we are. In the area, you know, we really do look at this. I mean, it's kind of a joking matter, but it's not. We look at how we line up with spring break with area school districts, because a lot of our people who are our employees may live in area districts, and, you know, all this kind of meshes together at some point. So Conroe, ISD, Tomball, Montgomery, Klein, even Katy are all on the same week for spring break that we are. Texas A&amp;M, the University of Texas, Texas Tech, Sam Houston, Blinn, Lone Star have all chosen this for their spring break week. Noticeably absent, the Baylor Bears. I'm not, not sure why, but they are kind of off on their own on this one. But yes, sir, that's, that's something we take a look at without a doubt.
Sorry, Travis.
Tell them to change their status.
Other questions?
Yeah, just to clarify, because every year when this gets printed and sent out, I get asked, who made this decision? So it is a committee of parents and teachers?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're happy with this?
It was a unanimous, unanimous vote to recommend this to you guys. Yeah. And look, we spent a lot of time looking at what other options may be. What we've discovered is with the requirements of 75,600 minutes, with us liking to get out before Memorial Day, and wanting a full week at Thanksgiving, all of that starts to narrow down your options on some level. So this is the recommendation that comes from the committee. But Ms. Evil, to answer your question, the committee is defined by policy and has elected representatives amongst the teaching staff from each campus, as well as, as a cross-section of people from the community.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, I need a motion that we approved. The 2022-2023 Magnolia ISD School Calendar, Year Calendar as Presented. Motion by Joe, seconded by Travis. All in favor? Motion All right, I think, all the way to the, yeah, all the way to executive session. The Board will now recess to move into closed executive session for the purposes permitted by pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074, Evaluation/Contract of Superintendent pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.072, Discussion of Purchase, Sell, Exchange, or Value of Real Property, and pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074, Personnel Discussions/Recommendations.
Before we go, can we, which floral group?
Yeah.
Floral class, because we have, these are beautiful, absolutely gorgeous.
Tonight was brought to you by Magnolia High School teacher Tiffany Way and the Advanced School of Design.
You're absolutely gorgeous.
It might get me out of, you know, trouble when I get home later. Look, look what I got you. I got it on the way, right?
Handmade.
I'm going to try to sell it that way anyway, but it'd be kind of a short sell. All right, that's it. Okay, I need a motion that we approve and accept the extension of Superintendent Dr. Todd Stevens' employment contract through June 30, 2025, as presented. Motion by Gary, seconded by Travis. All in favor? All right, this is going to be the tough one right here. I need a motion that we adjourn this meeting. Motion made by Kristi, seconded by Dasha. We're getting out of here.
No motions.
Everybody vote. Yep. All in favor? Done. We're finished. The time is 11:26.